Alright, Jim.
Okay, we're live.
Yeah.
It is, uh... It's six thirty folks would call this meeting for orders. Uh, okay, that's right. Uh, if you're willing, please stand for the vacation.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering tonight of leaders and dedicated volunteers. Please bless each of them for their countless hours of service to our city and our citizens. We pray for your guidance and all of our efforts to help our city grow and prosper. And make every decision and every effort that is put forth from this council, the mayor, and those that serve on the many board committees be favorable in your sake. Lord, we lift up those that are mourning the loss of their loved ones and precious innocent children after the terrible tragedy in Tennessee. Please comfort them with your love and your mercy. And Father, please watch over all of us as we deal with our daily lives and keep us safe. We ask all of these things in your son Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any other announcements?
I have some. Um, on April the eighth at two o'clock, we're gonna have our Easter egg hunt in the city park. It's, uh, the fire department, the auxiliary, and the police department will all be, uh, helping with this and sponsoring this. And so, and that's at two o'clock. Uh, we still need eggs and candy, and now we need volunteers. So if you want to drop off anything for that, you can drop it off here at the police department, at the Chamber of Commerce, and at the fire station. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, will be open from ten to one, Monday through Thursday. So if you wanna drop off, then you can. Um, and as well as the volunteers, uh, on April the... Let's see, hold on. April the fifth at ten o'clock at the Chamber building, uh, we're gonna stuff the Easter eggs. So if you wanna come help with that, uh, you're more than welcome to do that. We're gonna need all the hands we can get to help with that. It's on April fifth.
No, no, Chamber.
At the Chamber building, uh-huh, I'm sorry. And then also, uh, Tiffany Chapman asked me to please remind everybody about the election for the QISD no tax rate increase bond election. And she wanted me to relay to everyone that they're gonna have two town hall meetings that are open to the public. Uh, one of them is on Thursday, April the sixth at seven at Butler Intermediate. And there's another one on Thursday, April the twentieth, same school, same time. So if you wanna go and hear about this, I would urge you to please do that because there's a lot of information that they have about the different things that they are asking for. It's a twenty-five million dollar bond election. And they, they're very good at describing and telling you what, uh, what this is all about. So please come to one of those if you can.
Anything else?
Um, to add to the bond election, I spoke with the superintendent this past week, and he had mentioned something to me about it. And he said that if anybody had any questions, even outside of their town hall meetings, you're more than welcome to stop by the administration building. And, and they would, they would be willing to tell you anything, answer any questions. And even if people were like to go see maybe some of the facilities that this bond is associated with, they'd be more than happy to go show people the facilities. So they, they're wanting to do everything they can to try to get people involved.
And they, they also have a website that you can go to their QISD website, to their Facebook page, and learn a lot about it too.
They're an open book.
They are.
We, we seriously need, uh, some help in, uh, with that stuff. Taxes aren't going to the... Matter of fact, we got the lowest tax rate, second lowest tax rate again, at a dollar four.
Yes.
So it's, uh, uh, Cooper Commerce.
I do have one more thing, Mayor. I wanna remind everybody, um, about our water. If you haven't seen your IRIS that went out, we're doing a conversion where it's called a pre-burn type of situation. Um, so don't use bleach because your water is... I mean, I don't know if anybody can smell it. I can smell it. I love it myself because the water just seems so fresh. But, um, the water is, uh, it's, it's nothing harmful. It's something that's normal that we have to do. Typically, we do it, uh, probably about four to six weeks later than now. But we had to go ahead and do it early. So, um, your water's gonna, gonna have kind of a chlorination to it, but it's, it's called a free chlorine. So just don't use bleach. But that was sent out through IRIS and put in some other areas too.
I'm sorry, I don't know whether y'all announced about our EDC.
No, we, we just got started.
I'm sorry, I had my time marked wrong on my calendar. Um, we're having a meet and greet for the, the EDC's having a meet and greet for the businesses of West Walken on the thirteenth. It'll be from five to seven.
Where?
And it has a Deer Run, uh-huh, Deer Run Golf Course. And we want all the businesses that can to please come out and meet our Economic Development Corporation.
Can I repeat the date?
The thirteenth of April.
April first is the Walken, five to seven.
Yes. It's five to seven.
What time was that?
Five to seven for the, um, meet and greet.
Can individual businesses attend, or do they need to register?
No, just come, just come and visit. We're gonna, it's gonna be kind of a in and out as people come and go or can come and go. And we're gonna have, uh, some snackies, some little hors d'oeuvres, and some little sandwiches and drinks. We just love to have everybody come out and meet our Economic Development Corps.
Any other announcements? Anybody in the audience? All right, moving on, I remember five workshop, uh, I see we've got EDC represented. Keep Talking Beautiful, Zooming back there in the corner, uh, and Market on the Lake. Um, what we wanna, what I wanna do, I wanna try to get everybody on the same page, um, like minutes. Uh, some, some committees have all their minutes, some of them are missing. Uh, Keep Talking Beautiful is the only exception. They're, I don't know, they always get it on time. It's always neat, pretty, it's very easy to read. Uh, but we wanna get together so everybody can be a part of this and get on board with the city. Uh, I don't know, Kevin had to convince him, he wanted to go over.
I mean, I kinda sorta asked for this workshop, I think, in one of our council meetings. The main reason why I wanted, why I was asking for a workshop is I feel like that kinda like to the point of the minutes that was brought up also in the meeting. I just, I would like for us to figure out a way to get all of our committees and boards and whatever somewhat on the same page and somewhat of the same thing. We've got one committee that doesn't use Zoom, or well, or YouTube Live now. You know, we've got, there's just different things. And if, if we could all be doing some of the same things, it would look like the same entity, which we're not in truly the same entity when we're talking about EDC. It's sort of a separate deal. But I guess if, if we would all take a step back and look at it from the citizens' eyes, which is where my messenger comes from, and, and I'm sure every one of y'alls as well. And that's where I'm speaking from, is from what I get from the citizens myself, is the citizens don't see the EDC or Keep West Walking Beautiful or the P and Z as anything different than the ci- the city, right? I mean, there's no other way to slice that pie because they don't get involved to see that there is some separation there. Um, and rightfully so. You know, when you're talking about, say, EDC for example, or P and Z for example, something that the P and Z does or, or EDC does, somewhere there is a direct reflection or there's a direct impact upon the city. Can we all agree with that?
Definitely.
So that's where the citizens are coming from, and that's where some of the, some of the chatter that I'm getting. And that was the reason why I asked for us to have a council meeting. And there was a few things that I observed myself in the past few council meetings that were a little disturbing. And then it was, to me, they were disturbing, but then it was soon after that that I'm getting messages about this, and I'm like, yes, I, I get it, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have a meeting, and we're all gonna talk about this. Um, you know, and I could go into those examples if anybody would like to, to kinda shed the light on those. I can just tell you if I do, it'll probably upset or make somebody a little bit angry, and that is what it is. But, you know, in some of the last meetings that we were at, you know, for example, you got announcements. There was announcements made by individuals, but you can't tell if they're making those announcements if they're a council member or if they're another committee member or whatever. But then, I mean, like Pam, for instance, she made an announcement for the fire department, but then there was somebody in the audience that had to make the announcement for the meet and greet. That was the EDC meet and greet. I found that sort of disturbing, okay? Um, there was, there was another instance that there was, there was a request that, um, for the Market on the Lake. There was, there was a business that wanted Market on the Lake information. And I had asked Kathy to take care of that because she's Market on the Lake in my eyes. And she did, and I thank you. But I, it was, again, perception. I'm looking at everything from perception. I've, I've always been taught perception, that's a big thing. But whenever I got told, hey, thanks, the lady from the fire department came by and brought the Market on the Lake stuff. To me, it was, that was sort of disturbing again because there should be, there should be a separation. And, and what I mean by that is whenever we are wherever, we should represent ourselves as such. That's the way I've always been taught. Right? And, and I feel like that's, that's where we're missing the boat as whether we're a council member, whether we're a fire department, whether, you know, whatever we are, we need to represent ourselves as such in that city. And I think that's where we're missing it. And, and that's exactly what I'm getting from citizens. That's, you know, I get people all the time griping at me, and I'm like, well, I can't do nothing about that. I'm not on the fire department, I'm not on the EDC. I can ask questions because I don't know anything about the EDC. I don't know anything about the fire department because I don't, I don't deal with that, right? I don't want to. I wanna, I wanna focus on what I'm focusing on. And so that's why I asked that we all get together so we can answer these questions. Hopefully, people out there that's watching or listening or whatever will hear answers to some of their questions. But at the end of the day, I feel like that we need to streamline. We all need to be doing the same things to make it look like we're one. But we also need to make sure we're wearing the right hat in the right setting because just from, just from my own personal view, I don't see that. Um, the other one thing that I'll say is we don't all have Facebook pages. The city doesn't have one. I think that, well, the EDC has one, fire department has one, Market on the Lake has one. That's great.
We have one also. Keep West Walking.
That's right, we all have one. You know, I, I think that this day and time, that's important. That's probably something that we need to look at, thinking about for the city because I think people out there want to see that, right? The website's not enough, YouTube's not enough.
And we don't get that many hits on YouTube.
Right, and so, but Facebook, I mean, I was looking at everybody's Facebook and something that really, really came to my attention looking at EDC's Facebook was there's not a lot of business mentioned on there. I mean, there's a few, but there was very few, right?
We, we haven't been keeping any.
And, right, no, no, I'm not saying up to date. I'm saying if you scroll back and look, there was not a lot of business mentioned. But, um, I made a few notes here. And I don't have dates to go with this, but just real quick looking through there and making some notes. So, uh, Ranch Arrows was mentioned, uh, none. Griggs was mentioned once.
How old are those?
I, I, like I said, I don't have any dates.
Cause I, I don't think we've put anything on there.
Just scrolling, just scrolling back, right? Um, if you go down through and just Dollar General zero, so on so forth. But then you look at, uh, so Fat Cats, that was a new business. There was four on there. Beer Run, there was six. Fire Department, there was eight. I, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, and, and to be quite honest with you, I love our fire department to death, respect our fire department, thankful for our fire department. But I'll be honest, it seems like that's almost all we hear in the city. And that's, that's a great thing. But I think that's where we all need to wear the right hat in the right place. Ms. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I just had a question as far as the, um, Facebook page for the EDC. I thought that was, um, part of the internet site that we decided not to do any longer. So we haven't been doing anything with that, and I guess we need to have that shut down.
The one that was running our, our EDC, uh, Facebook page, when we decided we were going to do away with the website, she stopped doing that. So that's, she was doing that. None of us had, had administrator on it to be able to do anything.
And, and that's, I'm, all I'm saying is that, that's perception, right? That's, that's what people look at, that's what people see, that's what people read into, maybe. And that's what I'm trying to figure out how we can turn that, you know? Chris will, remember I made this one comment, sorry? And I'll say this and be done. When Chris and I both got on council at the same time, I said in that, in that, uh, town hall meeting that we had, this town has a black eye. And we're doing nothing right now currently to change that black eye. We have to do something different than what we've done in the past. And I'll be honest with you, the fire department we have today is not the same fire department that we've ever had in the past. I'll a hundred percent agree with that. But it's, but the fire department today has the same stigma as in the past if you listen to the people that, that talk, that... And it, it may not be the people that matter, right? But it's the people that talk, okay? And those are the ones that sometimes you gotta figure out how to turn. It's, it's just like anything in business. When you do something wrong in business, you don't get the out of boys, right? You get all, you never, if you do, if you do a hundred projects and you do them all right and you do one wrong, you don't hear about the hundred you did right, you hear about the one you did wrong. So we have to think about that and look at things and do it different. Not saying that the fire department's not going out and doing things in a public different, but it's what's in the, it's what they see.
So you're a handful of people that are complaining like this?
Hold on.
No, it is. It is a handful of people that won't get their ass in here at these meetings.
First, first off, Chris, first off...
Hey, hey, wait.
Wait, no.
Hold on, hold on. First, the first thing I'm gonna say is first check your tone when you're speaking to me because I'm not speaking to you in any kind of way derogatory or anything, please, sir, okay? Because you're taking whatever I said, and I said I was gonna make people angry.
You're right, I'm taking it personally.
But if you're getting angry at me, you need to walk out that door. Because I am not doing anything to make you angry. I'm speaking at what our citizens are saying. So before you speak to me where you're, you're making this personal between you and I, then you probably should walk out the door.
Could you tell us who these people are you talking to?
Exactly who they are. They're the same group of ten that put this city down for everything that is done. It doesn't matter if it's a positive thing, it turns into a negative to them. Ten, maybe fifteen group of people. We cannot please everybody.
Hey, I wanna respond to what you said about me going in and dropping that paper on the fire uniform. Okay, I had four flyers that I was putting out. Okay, I wasn't happy to drop that flyer, but I was also going to D Earl's as representative of the fire department. Are you telling me I need to go home and change clothes before I go around the corner in Quinlin and drop off an application? Now that's just stupid in my book.
This is a little bitty town, and people are on several committees, several boards. You know, my wife does, I don't know what else she does, but if, if it wasn't, if it wasn't for the same people that do everything, we wouldn't have anything. There wouldn't be anybody doing nothing.
I was intending to expand on what you, you started off, something about the EDC, uh, and the Facebook page, it was...
We had decided that we didn't need to continue to spend the exorbitant amount of money that we were putting into the internet. And the person that was doing the internet website was the same person that was doing the Facebook page.
Okay.
So that was cut off.
Obviously.
So we, we haven't been updating that because we have no access to that. It's not our...
Okay, alright. On the EDC Facebook page?
Correct.
Right, we cannot get, we have no administrative rights to it. We, we'll probably end up doing another page eventually, but right now we just haven't...
Okay, I didn't know that.
And, and why can't we post some things on our city website? You know, like if we want, one of the things we've been talking about doing is, uh, highlighting a business each month. We do that on our city page, Facebook page. And the EDC.
Well, the city don't have one, that's what I was saying.
But on the website.
I hope at some, right, but I hope at some point the city does get one back because I, I think...
We were told in the past that we, if we, if we did that, it was like advertising.
Okay, so we can't do it on the city...
Not in that sense, you know? But, but like events, we have a calendar.
Ms. Mayor?
Alright, so I'm, I started posting on the K, the, like, the KWTV, that's why I just call it because it's shorter. I started posting on that page, I got as an admin. Can I connect with whoever is doing the Market on the Lakes group? Or the, if we, if you start a new EDC, can we all get like one email chain? That way we can all be a member of each other's group and move forward as far as helping promote other people's, whether it's just sharing their things or going, um... We might not be EDC, we might not be Market on the Lakes, but look here, this is what they have going on. Don't forget about this because the people that are following this page might not be following that page. So we can just start a group chat or conversation, text message, call, whatever it may be. Wouldn't that be moving forward as far as benefiting the entire community versus just one individual group per?
That kind of networking would go miles.
Do we think?
So is there a way to just like get everybody's contact on that, like we all go out together?
No.
I don't know, I thought it was. You're like, is this in, you know?
So she, so what she asked is if she could get people's contact so there could be like a group, a group chat, group email or something going on?
Just whoever's in charge of each page, just get their contact and me and so forth. Whoever else can start communicating and getting that portion going. And that tabled off the agenda.
And, and every group should, should promote every group, you know? Just cause you see five posts on the EDC page about the fire department, that's, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well...
You know, somebody just took the time to do it.
I, 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 I hear what you're saying, but the way this came to me was all these businesses in town haven't been mentioning any is, is what...
Okay, well, the pressure I was... So what you're getting is they're sharing what the other people are pushing out there. The other businesses aren't using Facebook like we do. You see very little from Tin Cup, Deer Run, what they're doing, what they're doing. They're sharing what these other people are putting out.
What, what he was saying was, is that, uh, I believe it was on the EDC portion, uh, businesses that are listed and have been mentioned or not been mentioned. And if I remember correctly, uh, Market on the Lake, oh, the, Market on the Lake had like fifteen posts on the EDC page, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
It was like teen on, I believe it was, I believe it was Market on the Lake. Uh, and then there was, I don't know, how many, how many were on the, uh, uh, Market on the Lake and one other one?
I, I mean, and, and...
And you have to realize that that was Amy doing that. And so she posted what she knew about it. Whereas the EDC had no authority to post it.
Right, and, and so then that's what I'm saying is for us to make this look different, right? And, and the bottom line is the messages, and, and Chris, it's, it's quite a few more than ten. I promise you. And it's not, and it's not some of the same people that were, that have worn us out in the past. There's a couple of the same. There's people that I had no idea who they were, right? Um, matter of fact, I got caught at the gym one morning by a guy that was probably thirty-five. Starts bending my ear. And I'm like, okay, sir, sorry, you know? So I understand your frustration. I'm frustrated with it too. That's why I want us all to figure out how to make this work and how to make it look like that we as the council are trying to do everything we can to lift the city up. If, and, when, as we're council members, right? You, you've chosen to do something that you have to lift up two things. She's chosen she has to lift up two things. Bless her heart, she has to lift up, I think, a hundred things. Because that lady over there, she bounces around like a baby in a friggin beer can. I see her all the time. I see her everywhere. And, and I commend you for that. But what I'm saying is, is we've gotta be diligent because at some point, if we only hold this one torch, then people are gonna go, well then, why aren't they doing this, this, and this?
Well, how come they get to complain about it if they don't volunteer?
Yeah.
You know, that's what gets me.
Why are there these meetings?
Yeah, you, you know, there's been like five of us that have been true to the Market on the Lake. You know, that's the reason we don't have a quorum after. We want to bring the number of members down. We're not complaining about doing it, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying people don't notice, been like five people doing it. But yet, these people go on Facebook and everything and complain, especially when it was twenty degrees and we canceled it. But they didn't volunteer to go down there at six o'clock in the morning.
Right.
But they sure complained about it.
That's a mysterious question that'll never get answered, but...
Just to show you that the more needs that you feel, the more that are created. Humans will never be satisfied. It does not matter what we give, they want one.
You're a hundred percent correct. The only thing that I keep getting hit with over and over and over and over again is you are still doing the same things I've always done.
In the EDC, um, as far as the website and the Facebook page, that's one of the main reasons that we did shut down and spend money on that because everything that was listed was Quinlin businesses, Quinlin businesses, wherever. It was nothing to do with West Walken, and that's one of the main reasons that we were like, we're shooting out money for stuff for other towns, so we wanted to make that.
You, so?
Yes, so EDC did not post Market on the Lake. I tagged EDC, and that's why we shut up on its page. I didn't realize that it was shut down. I'm in charge of the Market on the Lake Facebook page, and I joined like thirty other groups, and I literally just posted to all thirty groups from Katn to Terrell to Rockwall. So that might have been on me. I didn't realize, I don't really understand the city Facebook page rules because there's not really any, but I'm just trying to do my best.
You didn't do anything wrong, Adelina.
So sorry.
You didn't do anything.
You didn't do anything wrong. And keep doing it.
Keep doing it.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, the one thing I always think about is about the, you know, the human needs. You can never fulfill them as soon as we get them filled, we create more. But also, the EDC has been doing a lot lately as far as strategic planning and getting a plan in place for the next five years. And I just wanted to make that clear that, you know, we're not sitting around. But I think one of the things that we need to do is set more individual duties as far as who needs to be doing what so that we can get more focused in general areas of what we're supposed to do.
Excellent.
I would like to say something about the EDC while we're on that subject. The, uh, I know they got beat up a little bit at the last council meeting for not having minutes. And, and that's okay because they don't have a secretary. And that's okay because they don't have a secretary. And sometimes things get skipped, you know, we hadn't had a planning zoning meeting in two months.
Yeah.
But I want to commend the EDC for finding the flaw that was done thirty years ago. There has been a lot of people that were president of that EDC in the last thirty years and including our current mayor, and nobody has come up with the, with the problem that we had. Nobody, nobody's found it. But the EDC we have now, and I know Allison was a big part of that, and they have found this flaw and they're in the process of fixing it and I want to applaud them for doing that. Instead of just picking on them for not having minutes.
Actually, we did have the minutes, it's just because of me being taken off the secretary position and put onto the board. And the agenda is just somehow inadvertently, it was not put on there to approve the minutes, the minutes have been missed. I'm not slapping them doing that.
We have approved our last year and I wasn't a part of the agenda.
One other thing, it's kind of off topic of the Facebook and all that is these ladies have enough to do without having people asking questions, wanting something done or whatever. Annette has recommended she go to an appointment on that type of thing. We can't just show up and get something done the same day. So Annette has said, let's just do it, do it by appointment, call her, email her, set up an appointment and then come in. What's happened now is we got sometimes two or three people coming in at the same time for the same thing, yes.
Well, and I also suggest that we kind of separate as far as like the EDC. The only way to get ahold of us is to call them or to call here. We need to have a separation to where they can call and get straight to the EDC or straight to the city.
Give everybody your phone number.
I would be more than happy.
There is an extension on our phone.
Right, right, but then y'all still, y'all still have to know with that.
I need a phone number to put on there.
Yeah, all they have to do is put a phone number on there.
It'll call that, I can do that, I don't have a phone number.
Your number, your number.
I just didn't think that, you know, y'all should have to deal with all those calls.
Could I say something?
Sure.
I look at here and I see all these faces sitting and fill this room up. These people right here are the same ones that show up for every single thing. Those people right there are the ones that need to be applauded because they have dedicated their lives to serving this city. I've been coming to these meetings since I moved here. After six weeks that I moved here, Marion Dwayne Hall asked me to come to a council meeting and I have gone to almost every one of them and other meetings ever since. That's what we need is more community involvement like these folks sitting here. That's how we're going to make this stuff more solid, we can't do anything without hands, nothing.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, first and foremost, I'm glad to see this format, I didn't know this format was allowed, which is also kind of why I've been pushing for town hall meetings for so long because I was looking for a format more like this. And first and foremost, I mean, the two things I got out of what Kevin's saying was one, a perception issue, which was kind of no dud to me after about three months of living here. And the second one was, you know, about this need for synergy between all these different groups. Can they write, I look around, I see almost the same people in all the same groups. And it's also something I talked to Jim about when I had the first meeting about town hall meetings, you know what? Is leadership by example, the only way we're going to get rid of the perception is by doing it, not talking about it. So if we're just talking about the same old things, it's going to get done, I got a plan in my head, whatever, you know what I mean? Okay, you know what, throw a milestone down, throw a stick in the ground, if you miss your timeline, whatever, it's okay. It happens, it happens all the day and time. But at least you could say why it happened and you could start explaining to people and they'll start saying, okay, they're trusting me and respecting me enough to let me know what's going on in a real honest fashion. So I think that'll, one, will help get rid of the perception issue. And then two, I think there are a lot of different people, a lot of different groups, and if they actually knew what each other were doing, there is a certain synergy there to where people can say, hey, look, I know what your mission is in the next month, I know it is in the next year, I know it is in the next five years. Maybe one of these other five or two or three of these other groups can help get them there. Right now, again, I think I mentioned last meeting, we've got to completely, in our HOA right here across over in Indian Oaks, we've had to wipe out over ten, ten years worth of work and start from scratch. And we just have to because that was the only way to get it done right. And now we're rebuilding it and we're going to start talking to other ageways because we've got some stuff in our neighborhood that's going to have to get done, the city's not ready to do. But the way we can help get that done by ourselves is to leverage other people and hopefully as a larger group of people, start getting some of this stuff done. So again, we're kind of working the microcosm of this, but it's the same thing we're talking about doing as a city. And I think once we start having some town hall meetings, having these open discussions, again, there's going to be some feelings hurt every once in a while, but you know what, iron, shocked is iron, we'll all get there, but that's the way we get to resolution. So I do appreciate, for whatever reason this meeting was set up that we're happening.
Yeah, there is a distinct difference in the town hall and art shop. So we're not done with the work, uh, with the open forum town hall. We haven't gotten to a date or anything yet, but that's what we need to do. I think we spoke about it, but we didn't, we never set a date.
No, we did.
April twentieth.
And even if that, and even if that town hall meeting is just figuring out how to have future and more productive town hall meetings, it's great to start when secured the location.
Mr.
Oh, I hate to see her. I'll see you now.
For the EDC Facebook page that's no longer active, I believe there's a way that you can make that page go away. And if it's not active, it probably would be better for it to go away off of Facebook so that people don't go out there and think, well, these folks haven't done anything since, you know.
I agree.
Right, we, we discussed that in the last meeting. Since it wasn't under our control, so we had to get ahold of that person that was actually there.
I think you can go through Facebook, if you could, all you have to do is prove that it was your page. I mean, if you're the.
But I don't think.
No, but if, I mean, if it's the Economic Development Corporation for the City of West, or the, whatever your span is and you can prove to Facebook that that is your domain, they can make you administrator and all.
Thank you.
Yeah. There is a.
Could we like hear from someone from each group about what they've got going on and what's coming up? I mean, you've got a captive audience here on.
I would love that because I have a handout for you. But I don't want to go first because it looks like the EDC is running its own is in front of the keep West Waukegan.
There's, it's in a picture holder, it is on paper, but it's not.
Well, then I would like to pass out these things.
Yeah.
Y'all have one up there on the.
Yes.
Um. Kathy. Kathy. Kathy.
Do you see our shirt? Is that, is that keep Waukegan beautiful shirt? And it says it keeps Waukegan beautiful shirt?
Yes, sir.
Nice looking.
Thank you.
I like it, yeah, good looking. I'll give you the shirt.
We have that. Would you like one?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm Mary Hall, I'm the chair of Keep Waukegan Beautiful. Kathy Majors had been the chair since 2014, uh, when the then mayor Calvin Travers organized this group. She had been on the committee of Keep Dallas Beautiful for a number of years in Oak Cliff. So with her experience, Calvin wanted her to be the chair. She retired in January from our committee and they elected me. So I printed a packet for everybody that lists our activities for 2023. And thank you for saying that because this way people will know what we have going on. Also in back of it, I have the three-page guidelines that we adopted back in 2014. One of the things that is very important to us is the liaison. About in Article Four, says City of West Waukegan's Code Enforcement Office should be officer. Our designated appointee shall serve as the liaison between the steering committee and the City of West Waukegan administration and has full voting privileges. We have not had a representative from the city since Dwayne is no longer employee. And we really need a liaison between our committee and the city to get things accomplished. Kathy did a lot on her own by contacting Susan, Annette, my staffer to get things done as far as cleanups and those kinds of things. But it would be really beneficial, we had somebody come to our meetings, it was a part of our steering committee, uh, full voting privileges to help us get to the city administration like we need to get. Also, we need the support of the city. And you know, we do yards of the month, we do plant sales, we do broad sales, we award most improved property.
Cleanup.
Lot of the cleanups we do, you know, a lot of them a year. And we just need more volunteers and more people to come to our meetings. We would like to see city support at these meetings. We'd like to have the mayor come at least one meeting and see what we're doing, what we're talking about.
I'm guilty of.
Yeah, I've never seen you up here.
I have, I've never been, that's my fault.
Well, we would welcome any visitor at any time to come and sit down at our meetings. But anyway, after we market on the lake, we will have our first plant sale. We're also giving out these seeds that have compliments of Keep West Waukegan Beautiful that we're going to just give out to people that walk by. We're going to have flyers to tell them a little bit what we do. And also we'll talk about the cleanup that's coming on April fifteenth, which is the following week. We also are going to be having a raffle, we have two raffle baskets, we have a blower and we have a drill that was given to us as a donation from Groom and Sons. And so we are going to be selling raffle tickets. So I would love for all of you, everybody, come out, market on the lake on the eighth.
What's the date for the cleanup?
It's the fifteenth, April.
Fifteenth. And what about subsequent, under like three schedule?
Yes, they're on the flyer, but I don't.
Okay, okay, I try, I'm on it.
But we have four scheduled, two in the spring, two in the fall.
Yeah, and what, which night of the month do you, like, city council on the second Tuesday?
The third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
Same day as court.
Mary.
Same day as court, exactly.
Mary, if the code enforcement officer doesn't have time or she doesn't want to do that, I would be more than happy to be your liaison to the city if you would, if you opposed us that.
Well.
Because I do come to your meetings, you see me there and I've got a lot of other things going on too. But if, you know, if you want me to, I can do that or if somebody else wants to do it.
Well, I need to be, I need to be covering our liaison.
Well, it's in our file, but that has not been handled, like I said, since Dwayne left.
It actually needs to be someone that.
It was intended to be somebody that worked here, somebody that worked at the city to be the liaison between our group and that, so.
So like a city employee that would be the best.
Yes.
Something to that.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously. You know, asses were out.
Oh, that has a date.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Is that on yet?
And I said something, new quick, yeah, wait.
Dwayne needs.
I just want to follow up on something that Kathy said, we've got five people. Keep West Waukegan, Waukegan Beautiful was four people for seven years, just four.
Oh, really?
Now, this year, we're fixed to add two members to our board, which will give us seven. So now we're getting outside members just to be members and not on the board. So we're growing, we're excited, things are happening.
And we now have shirts that identify so we can go out in the public and represent our.
We're going to put one of these on Kevin's new truck.
Pretty.
Mayor.
Okay.
Show the audience, Dwayne.
These were given out at the, uh.
Mystique.
Mystique meeting of Keep Texas Beautiful, they gave them out to all the affiliates.
Very nice.
How many did you get, just two?
Something else that you've been working on for several years, because I know I've been at your meetings and heard you talk about it, is doing a welcome sign, a city entrance welcome sign, which that would be so wonderful, I know you're.
That's our main goal.
Right, let's collect your funds for that.
It's purpose, she, do you have something, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay, it was answered.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, ma'am.
Uh, one thing that we have been talking about the meeting, not for this year, but for 2024, is starting an Arbor Day celebration to coincide with Market on the Lake. So that would be something we would be looking for volunteers for, like giving out little.
Which, which.
Startings and things like that.
She's on our Keep West Waukegan.
Okay, what was your name, please?
Adriana.
Adriana, okay, all right.
She's our Facebook guru.
Mayor, real quick, Dwayne, when you were employed with the city, saying you were the liaison, were you, did you get paid to go to those meetings or was it a voluntary thing?
No, it was voluntary.
Okay, and so that's, in this day and time, that's always a very important thing.
Yeah, I was sitting in my office buying my own business with Calvin, Calvin helped me. You are the first member and you are the city liaison and I'm like, member of what?
Yeah, and everybody sees why I ask that, right?
Sure, absolutely, and I understand.
And so I guess we need to, I guess, Annette.
And EDC can't even find a secretary and they pay.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I guess what, we're going to have to do several things. I'm going to lean on you guys, your committee, to try to learn our employees and try to reach out to them and start, you know, knowing who they are, meeting them and find them. But you're going to have to figure out the ones that live here, right? You're going to want somebody that lives here, obviously. And I'll just, and I'll just be honest with you, but you don't know until you ask. And that's what, that's where I was trying to get at.
We don't know who to ask. We're all the employees.
You ask these ladies right here.
Can you just don't say keep to go on?
Right, I mean.
But that's not in my school name. I may have someone that may be interested.
Did you see what I'm saying? It would be very beneficial, but.
They have to be in the West Waukegan Water Service area.
They have to be service.
Right, but it's also going to be very beneficial for them because even if they, even if they live in the service area, that's great, but if they live in the city, that would be even better, right? So it's a good thing that that rule is there, but, and I didn't even know it was there, but in my eyes, it would be very crucial and important for them to live in West Waukegan or have West Waukegan water, right? And, and there's a couple of reasons, and I'm going to say the personal reason for it is, is I look at things from a personal standpoint, if you're going to ask somebody to volunteer and they live fifteen or twenty minutes away from here and you're going to say, I need you to volunteer, then just think of the logistics. But if they live here, they're going to be more vested, they're going to be more idealistic, they're going to be more grounded. So you need them to live here, so that's probably the reason why that rule was put in there. Makes sense, makes sense to me for sure, so. I would say, I would say, we're not going to get anybody to volunteer until they know who y'all are.
That is a real problem.
And, but, but how do you solve that problem?
Get out.
Trying to do that, but Facebook for one thing, but we have so many activities and so few people, especially in this group here, come to those activities. It's been that way for years. We have a garage sale, I wake up, we have a plant sale. I'm excluding you, Robert.
I've celebrated you too.
I'll say, I'll say it like this, Mr. Hall, so I'm on the city council, right? That's all that I want in this city.
Dwayne loaded you up?
And no, because my belief is a person, a person becomes ineffective when they put their hands in too many, in too many places. That's my, that's my personal belief.
And you could come to the sale and buy a plant for your wife.
Well, and we did last time, but what I'm saying is this, I'm on the council. Typically, most of the time, the only employees that are at this council is the ones that sit right here and the ones that stand over there with a gun and sometimes some public works people. But I know every single employee in this city and I'm about ninety-nine point nine percent sure I know where every one of them live.
Well, I would give that list from Kim and Annette.
And it's not because I asked for a list, it's because I kind of made myself around, and I spoke to them, and I, and I came around and I looked at my city. If I seen somebody in a city truck, I would.
One of the things that we are working on is the Veterans Memorial at City Park. And when we get finished with that, that would be awesome if you could come out when we read that, hey, can we open it? And have everybody there. I would love, I know Calvin said you out speak before, and you're very eloquent. So it would be nice if we all were on the same page and made that a party for everybody to be at and show up and, you know, give support. Because we're spending a lot of time, a lot of money, and that would be really needed if you could come out and sponsor me.
Part of what you mentioned is kind of the, what catapulted us into this workshop. That's why we're doing this. I agree, you're a hundred percent right. And that's what the intent is, is for everybody to get on the same page. Is there anything else from anybody?
So is your, your, your Veterans Memorial Garden, we have things supposed to set plays.
We were hoping to, oh, sorry, go ahead. Uh, when we were talking about it, we were hoping to redo it on Memorial Day for memorial, like a little memorial celebration, whether it be that morning or midday. We talked about doing like a pop-up, seeing if we could get like pictures up the road to donate some food or anything like that, so.
Can you give you guys my number, and also the XO for the young Marines down in Goffman County? They would love to do a color card ceremony or something.
Because we are naming it the Veterans Memorial Garden, is what we're naming it. It used to be the Rose Garden.
Those rose bushes were treacherous.
And I pulled, I pulled some out that were like, kind of dead, but I didn't want to pull them all out because I was afraid that somebody'd come up and lynch me from a tree. Because I mean, I didn't know if they were planted in somebody's name or what, right? And the next thing I know, Leon gets the satisfaction of just yanking them all out, and I'm like, I wouldn't have done that. I'm up here delicately cutting and barely trying to pull this one dead one out of the middle, and he just gets to yank them all out. Yeah, I'm up there scared somebody's fixing to come by and off me for pulling up their grandmother's rose bush. And the next thing I know, I drove by one day, and Leon's up there going, ah, ah, ah. Hey, wait a minute, is that okay?
I noticed that when Martha and I went out there to peel it all up to get it started for this year, that a lot of the AMVETS kept swinging by asking what we're doing. Are we going to reopen it, things like that? And there was something going, can you invite, can you send us an invitation to the AMVETS? Can you send us an invitation to the BFW because we'll show up if you reopen it? So that's what kind of started that conversation.
Kevin, can I speak to something you've said twice about us doing too much? I would, you know, you, you said it perfectly, I wear a lot of hats.
I'm tired.
But that reflects me, and there's a lot of people sitting here that do the same thing I do. They do lots of different things. It, just because you do a lot doesn't mean that you can't give a hundred percent to the thing your laser focused on.
I don't just, I do not.
And I don't mean to sound like that, I'm thinking that personally, but.
I do not disagree with you, but there's, there's only, there's only choice people that can actually do that.
I agree.
And you also have to have the right, I think there's got to be the right recipe there, whether it be you're a hundred percent retired, whether, you know, so on and so forth. So I think there's a lot of things that have to be considered in that, but then again, there's some people that can be CEOs, and there's some people that can be janitors, right? And the janitor, that's their capacity, that's their mental capacity. Doesn't make them a bad person.
No, we need more janitors.
Right, but, but you see my example, my, my example there? So, so yours in, in the volunteering realm of things, you're, you would fit into the CEO class of the volunteers. But not everybody is a CEO.
Right, and I don't expect that.
You're going to, you're going to find more, you're going to find more middle-class people, or middle-class workers, or janitors, so to speak, and I'm just using that as an acronym. You're going to find more janitors than you will CEOs.
And I respect the janitors, believe me, I do.
But there's only one, there's only one CEO in every company.
Right.
And then you're going to have, say, a hundred employees. And I'm trying to use that as a picture to paint for everybody, that we all need to think about that is, we can't all be CEOs.
No.
Although we want to be, we're not all CEOs. And sometimes we have to humble ourselves and, and, and look at that, you know?
But you shouldn't put down CEOs either.
Because I'm not the CEO of everything.
Today's morning, we're free day.
Just for myself, I know that I'm, I'm in EDC, and then I've been trying to do some stuff for the other, you know, committees there. And with the full-time job and doing that, it just gets to be a lot. And I start making mistakes on what I'm going to be doing for one to the other, so. It is a lot easier if you need more focus to one. I understand what Kevin's saying, but I also understand what Robin's saying. She has, she can do it, and she wants to do it, that's great.
And, and back to what I mentioned earlier, you just said you make small mistakes, right? That's the issue in, in, in the world. It's not about how big the mistake is, or how small the mistake is, it's about the, the one thing, the mistake. That's the only thing that we get, that's the only thing that we get any kind of notification for. We don't get a notification for what we did good. We only get the notification for the mistake that we made. Whether it's small, whether it's big, and whether it's, say, we only made, we made ten small ones. Well, guess what, there's ten notifications of, you did this wrong. It doesn't matter if it was big or small.
That depends off what kind of CEO you have.
You know? That was all, and see, that, that was, that was all just, that was all just a metaphor, right? That wasn't, that wasn't a true statement. But at the end of the day, you only, you, you never get the atta boys are doing a good job. You don't, and you really, really don't. You do more when you're getting paid for a job than you do when you're volunteering. Volunteering is a thankless job. It's a thankless job, you don't get any thanks for nothing, for anything.
But I don't expect that, though, as a volunteer, I don't expect the atta boys. I just do it for my own satisfaction of knowing that I've helped somebody. That's where I get my pleasure and my happiness from, and my joy from, is knowing that I've done something good to help somebody else.
I agree with you.
Now, I think the question is, how can we change that? How can we turn that around? That mental thinking of people saying, thinking negatively, how can we change that?
And that's what I said before you got here earlier. The only way we're going to change that is because right now, unfortunately, what we're, in, in the people's eyes that have been talking to me, right? And if we, if we would all look back, I think we're doing a whole lot better than what we were ten years, twenty years ago, right? But if we would, if we would stand up from a bird's eye view and look in, from a bird's eye view, we're still doing a lot of things the same way we were ten years, twenty years, thirty years ago. And what I'm saying by that is, is looking at, okay, so we have a council meeting, right? Our council meeting has to vote on things as in such in money and, and purchasing properties like the EDC, all those things. Well, that was, those things like that, that was one of the big things that I got, I got hammered. I, I was on the phone, and I think after that meeting that night, that we, that we said we were going to buy the property, the EDC was going to buy the property, we voted on it as a council. I was on the phone until eleven o'clock that night with different people. People calling, what are y'all going to do? What is this? I'm like, all it was that was voted on, I don't really know, I don't, I'm not part of the EDC, I don't know what they're doing with it. Right? Well, that's this, that's that. Well, why did the EDC member vote on something that was part of an EDC thing? I'm like, okay, I didn't even realize that happened. But, but then again, I think we all probably missed that.
Well, we're supposed to. According to the, to the, the way the council set up, it, just because I'm a member of the EDC does not exclude me from.
But think about what the citizen's CEO's perception is, right? That's what I, that's what I'm getting. How are we going to have somebody that says something from another group, bring that idea to a council, and then be a weighing vote on what their idea was? Does that make sense?
So are you saying the issue, you're thinking, and just from my perception here, do you think it's transparency is what they're asking for, more transparency?
I, I absolutely a hundred percent know it's transparency, because that's been asked for tenfold, right? But I'm afraid what, what I'm getting from everybody is, they're always thinking that we're doing something wrong, or shady. That's, that's what I'm getting, and I understand it, right? And, and I don't know if y'all, y'all all ever realized this, but usually, I try to be one of the last ones in here, and I'm the first one out of here. Although we have a quorum posted and all this and that, I'm not going to be told that you were in there talking to all the council members, and y'all were hem-hawing and talking about something. Okay, that's the main reason why I do it, because I hear what these people are saying, I don't want to get caught up in what their thoughts are. Yes, ma'am.
Just to go a little bit over what the EDC has been coming up with lately, one of the major things is knowledge. Not knowledge just for us, but a knowledge for the citizens as well. So one of the things that we are going to be working on is getting a knowledge base together that even citizens can go up, if they have a question about how we're doing something, they can go in there before they come to us and say, okay, it's not that they were doing it wrong, it's just that I didn't know, or, okay, they are doing it wrong, and I can show them exactly where they're doing it wrong. I mean, that's, a lot of the problem with a lot of, a lot of the issues around here that I've seen, has just been knowledge on everybody's part. So I think that by creating a knowledge base where, say, if it's on the website or wherever, they can just go in, look up their concern, see if it's something that we're doing wrong, or if it's just something they didn't understand. And I think that will help a lot with some of that.
Amen. You're doing a great job getting us back on track. I guess we're working back on track, right?
Yeah, yes, because we are also, we have submitted the documents to the state to get everything. And I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that just because we weren't registered through the state with that file, that stamp of file, does not mean that anything was done incorrectly or that it has to be void. As long as it was done in good faith and on the information that we were, the entity that we are, there is nothing wrong with what we have done. None of the actions we have taken are void, and everything is good to go, so. That's what I know I got. For now.
Any other comments or concerns regarding some of these committees?
No, I just actually, I'd really like to second what she just said, because again, it's along those lines of transparency. You call it a knowledge base or whatever, but yeah, having a, again, plans, people's plans, or mission statements, and all that kind of stuff. If you have a place you can go find the information yourself, I, I'd rather go look, trust me, I hate social networks, okay? But if I had anywhere I could go to find the information, person out in the council on the phone, I'm going to do it.
That's what I'm working on for that.
I think the problem, situation that we have here is a legacy issue. Saying that, it's been happening for so, so, so long, and the people or the citizens that were involved back then, and they wanted to be updated back then, at this point, probably they got a little fatigued or tired about it, and they probably stopped supporting, commenting, or listening to the meetings and stuff like that, because they got tired. They are thinking that, oh, it's more of the same thing over and over, because it was a legacy issue. Now that seems like we changed pretty much all of the key players on different teams, we just need to get with our faces out there somehow to try to catch their attention back again and say, you know what? Yes, we recognize that we did this, we're trying to fix it right now. Give us another chance, give us another opportunity, and try to erase that legacy issue that they have in their mindset that has been happening for so many years, and try to bring it to reality right now. You know, we're doing this on the city, we're doing that, we implemented this, we have invested in this, and so on. In my opinion, I think this here is more of a legacy issue than, than what is currently happening. So how do we fix this? Better communication, not transparency. This communication is the key, that's it, in my opinion.
Is there anybody on the planning and zoning here that can tell what's going on with you guys?
Sharon?
Well, there's two people on the planning and zoning committee here.
Four.
I'm sorry, look behind me. We don't have a Facebook page, and I don't really think, I mean, this, this is my opinion, I don't think planning and zoning really needs a Facebook page. I mean, we function as an, unlike EDC, that's an individual entity for Keep Westwoking Beautiful that is trying to change the appearance of the city and draw up, and new volunteers. The planning and zoning committee functions as an extension of the council. We, we go in and look at issues, the nitty-gritty of people that want to do something on a piece of property, and we've been given these, these petite little books that have all of the, the doc, the rules that we're supposed to be aware of, and we, we rule. We, like the EDC, are in desperate need of a secretary. We can't find a secretary, so our, our minutes are suffering. So if anybody knows anyone, and we even pay, like you said, per meeting.
One of the things I'd like to see from P and Z, and I'd like to see kickoff next month, is YouTube. Every, every committee, every, well, except Market on the Lake. We're working on that.
The secretary used to take care of that for us?
It's just, it's just something that's set up by the meeting, it doesn't take a few minutes of this. Just turn it on, so that way, P and Z is as, as a city council. So if they, they, everybody sees the same thing. Because right now, there's a void, they don't, they don't have to fill that void. And I think we can, if we start putting this on YouTube, I'm sure Kim will be glad to show you how before the next meeting, that, that needs to be done.
Alright. How many board members do you have, just planning and zoning have? How many, how many actual spots are there on, you know, there's seven?
There's seven spots.
Seven?
Yeah, really.
Yeah, just, you know, we, P and Z hired someone to come out and give us classes, a class on how to be an effective committee. And during that class, it's come to be basically my understanding that I should be voting no or abstaining from any votes, because we're lacking the resources from the city council to be able to do our jobs effectively. So that's probably something else we should take offline, but that's something that's been rolled up, and I've been, I've already taken to the chair, and I put out an email about it already. But that's something that has to be taken a look at. It's not really, it's not really offline, that's kind of what this, this is for, this is the workshop. Well, we need a comprehensive plan. We should be making decisions in our P and Z council without one. So can I rewind just a little bit? Sure. I appreciate you saying that, but can I rewind just a little bit, right before you said what it was we needed? So those are the kinds of things exactly right there, what just happened is what we have to stop from happening.
So I tried to warn you, but you said bring it up.
No, 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 I'm saying, it, I, I appreciate you sharing it, but that's what has to happen, is you have to be willing to share it. Not, not what you were going to do, you, you were like, no, that's something we have to bring up to a different. That's, that's what our citizens are seeing happen so many times in meetings, that somebody says, well, we need to do this, but, but I guess we'll have to talk about that at a different time. Roadblocks. So we're leaving, we're leaving all this imaginary. You're guilty, because that conversation you and I had in the parking lot four months ago was about the exact opposite of what you're telling me right now. I guess I'm not following. That conversation we had in the parking lot between you, Jim and I, the first time I came here, asking for about transparency? I've been going to all these meetings, watching people run for council and everything? Well, I think that's because you were wanting this in council meetings. Okay, well, I'm just saying, you're making it very hard for me to understand when and where and the right boundary for transparency is, because I'm really trying to figure it out. Well, in, in this setting is, this is, this is the open table, but in the council meetings, which is the only other four times I've seen you or so in the council meetings, and, and I understand you were frustrated, right? But that was where we can't do that. We can't do that here, we can all talk back and forth amongst each other here. It's a workshop.
We have an agenda we have to follow, and, and if it's not on that agenda, we cannot discuss it.
And so, so like.
That's not something that we mandate, that is a state.
I guess what I scored to meet then hasn't up and brought to the city council's attention that we're lacking this piece of important, or actually, it's more than important. Because you said, you said the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan. I, that, that's, that's the first time I've heard it. I bet, that's, that's, that's the first time I've heard it.
We've had one.
There's four, there's four of us council members here, but that's the first time I've heard that, that you guys.
For classes, there was something close to adopted as a plan, but done back in like 2013 and need at that time, it wasn't even adopted, it was only proposed.
So my question is, has anybody at, with the P and Z came up here and asked Annette or anybody for, if we had a comprehensive plan?
Well, I'll tell you what, I picked the email from two months ago, the email I did as a reminder, send it to you, we can go from there.
But it was also brought up in that.
I brought it up the last two meetings.
In the training. In the training that we had.
I remember that, that first thing that you, the training, because they invited all of us to it, and I remember it being talked about.
There's actually about three or four things we're missing, but that was the main critical one that really said we should not indeed doing our job or making any votes without it.
Yeah, that, and the, in that training session, we also talked about that the ordinances really need to be updated. And the, and the, the things that you give a developer or a builder to actually build or develop in this city need to be updated. You know, we on the Planning and Zoning Committee only can work with what we have. Okay? So even if it is a poorly written ordinance, we gotta go by the ordinance.
I wanted to go back real quick to what you said earlier, that y'all don't get a lot of hits on the YouTube app. Instead of KWTV doing YouTube, would it be okay if I set my laptop up and we did Facebook Live? Because I feel like we have more, we would have more followers on our page through Facebook than if we were to start a YouTube page as well.
I don't see it being a problem.
I don't either, but we.
I mean, just, I think as long as it's a live stream that would get out to our citizens, right?
That's what they need.
That's what they want, that's what everybody asks, that's what they want.
It's noted on the webpage.
That's what they want, I mean, I'll be honest with you. The, the council that's here right now, and the mayor, and, and these ladies have heard me, probably in the last three or four months, I've mentioned Facebook. And, and when I do, a lot of people's eyes cross, because not everybody seems to like Facebook, but I'm just telling you, it's not going to be long before I keep saying it enough, and I ask for it to be put on the agenda, because I think it's something that would help the city.
And I think like, uh, the mayor said earlier about recording these sessions or put it live on YouTube or now Facebook, whatever it is, it is very important, especially for us at the EDC, but also at the P and Z, because as you guys are expensive to council, your decisions, short term, long term, will have a direct impact, immediate impact to the community. So not only that, so people can see it live at the moment, but when we post that link for the month, people can go back and review that meeting and come up with new issues or a different point of view for the upcoming meeting too. As well as we as members, we can learn from our, our own settings.
Putting on Facebook's fine.
And also answering questions.
Uh, on, on YouTube, it's all under, you go to, you go to the City of West walking, and the, the, P and Z, can you wait just a moment?
Yes.
So all the committees are doing it, on that, some of that same page, EDC does it, the EDC, uh, Keith Westwalking Beautiful is on, uh, I guess that's it.
P and Z's not.
Yeah, well, P and Z's not, that's one of the things that ought to change, getting, getting P and Z on there. But that's kind of what we're doing anyway.
I just, there is, and I was thinking Facebook Live was, one, I feel like that's probably where this committee has the most followers. And two, I'm the youngest, so I'm the one that ended up being the one that does it. No offense, y'all.
I'll take it.
I'll probably be the most technological savvy, and I'm not, I've never really done YouTube, that's not something that's in my wheelhouse, but I understand Facebook, so that's something I can do. So I was just trying to address my limitation on something I do.
And maybe you start, if you, you know, if we get everybody on, on board with YouTube, and you're not, uh, P and Z, or, or you know? Keith Westwalking. Uh, all those things need to be on, online, that way everybody's got the same place to go to. Uh, like I said, if you go to YouTube and go down to subscriptions, uh, you can pull up the City of West walking, and mine, the way mine's set up, anytime anybody uses that YouTube, I get a notification and I can watch the whole thing by myself, save it, or, you know, whatever. In order for it to count as a view, you have to go on there and watch the video for thirty-one seconds, I think it is, and then it counts as a view. So, even, the numbers are small, they're even smaller than what we're seeing. Because you got, I've done it two or three times, uh, going on to another person, another committee's, uh, YouTube. So we're doubling it, I'm, I'm doubling it, other people that go on there, they want to watch some more of it, they watch it. So, to me, the account is way off, it's, it's really not as high as what the counter shows.
Actually, if you're logged into, if you're logging to Google, you're, you're only going to count as one.
If you log into Google, what?
If you're logged in, they have you logged in as the person watching that video, and it's only going to count as one.
Oh, oh, oh.
Thank you, Allison, awesome.
Unless you're not.
Well, I was just going to say, underneath the YouTube, on the City of West walking YouTube, there's, um, a section that is called Channels. And you can set up separate for each department under that YouTube. And then all you have to do is just go into Channels, and it'll say EDC, or it'll say City of West walking, instead of having to find all of the videos and sort through them from the page.
That would be the way for us to do that. Does anyone know, can you, can you go live on YouTube and Facebook at the same time?
There is a way to satisfy the type of audience.
And so that would be my suggestion, is what we would need, I promise you, 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 you won't have a problem with YouTube.
I volunteered my son as our assistant.
So what I'm saying is, I, I love to live with Facebook, but then I, one thing about the channels, but that's how we need to do that, is we need to do all of our, all of our other entities, or, or, you know, whatever, we need to do them as a channel on our City of West walking YouTube, and then you can just go live on both. And then that means you're going to capture all your Facebook users plus.
Well, you do got to have special OBS software for that. I mean, don't get me wrong, it can totally be done, but it's a new level of expertise.
But if somebody said something negative according to social media rules for the council, or for us, or for EDC, or whatever, we can't answer.
We'll just be like a duck, let it roll off her back.
That's what I mean, just ignore it.
It is what it is.
Or we get somebody's attention, somebody.
I mean, some, some, we, I mean, we, we may talk about it, but we don't have to like, I think we have to, you know, get all the armor and all, all the guns and go at it, so.
We've had some people that have left because they were here to talk about the market. One lady just got up and left, we haven't heard anything about Market on the Lake. Are we going to discuss that? I mean, it's, it's ten till eight. Are we going to talk about that, or is there anybody here?
I got, I got one more thing.
I'm sorry?
I think, uh, there, there is a way to satisfy the, uh, younger people that they're used to live streaming on Facebook. So when we start the meeting, or whatever it is, the people who liked already the City of West walking webpage, we, we can put an ad or an announcement on Facebook. We just started the meeting and put that link on the YouTube, so they can watch it there. That way, we don't need to transmit into two different channels. They can open up that link, and they'll be watching straight from YouTube, but they get the announcement on their Facebook page. And I think that could be a good solution for the forward.
You're hired.
Okay, so, I mean, I didn't, if somebody wanted to speak about something, I, I wish they would spoke up, because this is sort of an open floor, it's not like this.
Well, she was just kind of observed it, she had a folder in her hands, I'm wondering if.
I'm not actually that, that's an application that the rule that she wanted to equip you somewhere.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, anything else, go ahead.
Anything you want to say?
I think it's something we need to figure out.
It's April eight, and I hope somebody from West walking starts coming, because when they walk by, you know, we do put it on Facebook, and I'm going to start posting some more tomorrow. But I'm honest, when I say we ask them if they're from West walking, because they, we totally got virus, and we sign them up for that. But half of these people are not from West walking.
Yeah, I asked, said question where you're from.
Yeah, you were there on that.
Yeah, I did, wherever I go, I just ask that question.
So Annette or Kim, did y'all get the comprehensive plan?
I wrote it down. I'll get with, I wasn't at, that was when Bureau came, wasn't it? When they came in.
Beritos?
Beritos. Yeah, when he came and taught that, I think he's come, he'd come twice. So, uh, I'll get with Shannon.
I think Shannon, I think there was three or four items to consider, and they all had different price points, but the comprehensive plan was basically what he said, he said, really, there's no point in meeting without it.
And you sent an email to somebody, you said, I guess?
There was a P and Z, I did a follow-up, and I think, I can't remember if it was Bill or, or Chris, but I followed up, this is where are we at with this? Because basically, me, I didn't speak for the council, I just spoke for me, I don't feel like I can effectively be a part of this without it. Because, you know, we hired somebody, because we all admitted we didn't know enough to be able to do the job effectively. So that's why we hired him, we got educated, and then basically, you can't really be effective that which you're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, that tr- yeah, that training was something that the mayor and I had set up.
Do we still need?
Rick, well, that was one of the ingredients.
Is the P and Z's in still need of more education?
I would say, well.
Well, if you want to utilize them as a team.
Yes, but again, at baby steps, I think he said, without having the comprehensive plan, where do you really go after your next steps of training? Because we need that to be able to train towards.
Yeah.
I would rather the city spend the dollars on rewriting the, the ordinances and the codes in line, in line with.
Put a lot of S's after that.
Yeah, and, and in line with whatever your comprehensive plan is, then it would be much easier to function as a team.
Yeah, rewriting all the codes and all that stuff, there's, there's a whole lot of.
Something I'm going to ask all of your leaders.
The comprehensive plan too, it's probably, from what I understand from it, it would make a lot of our other volunteer groups able to work towards the city's.
Plankton. Something I'd like to ask all of you that are chairmans or presidents or what have you, or if your vice presidents are here, please, at the bottom of your agendas, list that there could be a possible quorum of council members, because we want to come to your meetings, but according to the state statutes, we have to post a quorum if there's more than two of us at a meeting, okay? So if you would please do that in the future, that way that more of us, if, if the whole council wants to show up, we can and still be in.
When I, when I get their agendas. When I get their agendas now, like, uh, when Kathy sent, I mean, uh, when Mary sent me their agenda, I posted that notice of the quorum.
Good.
We've been posting it for EDC for a while.
Yeah. Please do that, so that we can, because I, I think there might be more of us that might want to come, we just don't, because, you know, we have to stay within the letter of the law, what it tells us, we, we can't include it.
So I know EDC meets here, Planning and zoning meets here, Keith Westwalking Beautiful meets here.
From Market.
Market on the Lake is meeting here now, right? The last meeting or so. So, so that's a good, that was a, that was a good step in the right direction, I think, for us to kind of seem uniform, whatever. I think the only other thing is, we've got to figure out at some point with Market on the Lake, what we're going to do with the money, is what we're going to do with whatever, we got to figure out the members, right? And that kind of helps us be a little bit more transitioner.
We started out with that person that had to quit. And we have not, the quorum was the same.
Never had seven people show up to meet.
So I do have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, but nine people, one, that we need to protect, we can close down to be members.
It would be better if we had like seven on our board, and then the rest could just be members.
Yeah.
And then that way, we wouldn't have to worry about.
On the line of what?
For the market on the lake.
But, so, and then I guess the other thing is, that's always been the question for, for the ladies was the money. What are, you know, what are we going to do with the money? I don't think that's ever been anything of a plan, right? The money that the market makes.
We would have liked to, last year, we, we talked about Christmas presents, but then we realized that we have no authority to do anything with the money yet, because nobody had decided what we could do.
No, that's what I'm saying, we've got to figure out.
So we've got to figure that out, so that they can use the money for community projects that they want to use it on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on, on nothing, signs or whatever, yeah, I've seen, I mean, we've seen that, right? We've seen it kind of through council, but, but we need to figure out what that could be put to good use for.
And there's been, there's been money spent just by members on their own pocket, that they've never asked for reverse.
I feel that.
All right.
But yeah, so we meet every third Wednesday of the month, Market on the Lake, if you love it, you can be there, we'll add that, which you said, Morgan. But, uh, we're, what, when do we not meet? What months, Kathy, January, February, March? Yeah, those, so we're going to be like out of season, January, February, March, just because you can't really plan the weather. We've had snow apocalypses, all this madness. So if y'all could see, like, I deal with a lot of hate on Facebook, so if y'all see that, just make sure you put to like, we're out of season right now, because we need to let everybody know. And then we're not going to have our vendors out there having a heat stroke. Also make it like common knowledge of health and safety. And if you see that, just feel free to back in with us and support the health and safety of our community and our vendors, because they're the ones that will be here the following month. And if we lose them, which we've already lost a couple of our vendor sadly, we're not going to have one. And we really just need to be completely aware of the weather and the differences that it has, and just back each other up in this community, because we're all against each other, we're all at each other's throats, but we're all pressing towards the same goal. So y'all just help me out too, because I'm a college student, so I can't always like argue on Facebook, you know? So y'all can just like back me up to like, you know, it's hundred and three outside.
But, but, is it fir- thir- Thursday?
Third Wednesday.
Thursday, Wednesday.
And that's when our market meets, and then of course, we're the second Saturday of the month. But we're out of season, January, February, and March. So we just kind of want to broadcast that, so everyone knows, because it's just been kind of crazy. I don't think it was, I don't think I did a very good job really broadcasting that. But this season, I'm really going to push that we're here until January, so make sure you come out now. And then if y'all see a post that I make, just make sure you share it, because I mean, if I can get twenty shares on some of these posts, I'm having three thousand people engage. And it's crazy, but nobody is coming. So if we could just have some more people from the community actually share and tell your neighbors, it's down, it's completely free. They don't have to buy anything, they just have to show up and show support, you know? It'd be nice if they did though, but you know, just show support to the community, because I really think Market on the Lake is something special, because we have our heart, it's really cool. So if y'all haven't been there, make sure y'all come and support it. Take pictures, post them, tag Market on the Lake, and I can help you too. Just come like, talk to me, but yeah, just want to share that.
Yeah, we've got twelve to fifteen that usually are the same ones that come.
Vendors.
Yeah. One the other day said, we're like a family. If there's something else that's going on, we usually let it be Market on the Lake, West walking. I mean, all the vendors have been wrong very well, and I know Lucky Kevin has been. I have not heard one of them complain, if there's been any, well, they have complained about the restaurants.
Yeah, I think, I think the only, I think the only, only kind of, I heard a little bit of bellyaching before when we threw, ain't just pies down the end. I did hear that.
Yeah. That was one of them.
Yeah, but they, they were a little upset that they were throwing all the way at the end, I do know that. I mean, she told me that when I went up and bought pies.
They moved her up.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, that was, that was the only vendor.
She's happy.
You asked, like, I told you, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, anything else?
Here you have it.
I'm sorry.
There's a local radio station on this side of the town that we have, or somebody have a connection to.
KGBL.
Probably if we get a conversation with them, they can help us broadcasting.
You can, uh, I think Friendly, that's his name, he, he does a lot of interviews with, with locals that want to put word out for things. So you might want to get in contact with him, it's KVGL, it's in Greenville. And it is a local station, but it goes to a lot of cities in East Texas.
And what was his name?
Friendly.
Friendly. Friendly.
F R I D. It's been around a long time, everybody knows.
Rita.
Rita Mudd.
Is it the same station?
Then, then also. KGBL.
Then also invite them to come over to the activity and broadcast live from the place too.
Like if you're willing or everything, so, nope, thank you. Six or seven, right, touching a hair. Yeah, yeah, they're real good people, and they'll let you go hang in with them.
What can we do for them?
Is that it?
Tammy at the chamber has been posting it on the radio.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Rita's good, she's really nice.
And a lot of your groups are members of the chamber, give them your information, they will blast it out to all their members. A lot of your groups are, are members of the Chamber of Commerce, so do that.
They'll do anything, as long as it's, they're supporting volunteer, they just don't want to have a business coming in. We don't make money on it, so.
Kathy, sometimes these radio stations, they have an open forum, X, Y, and Z days during the week, so they give it all and advertise, hey, we're gonna have this activity in West Walken, and it's a free.
And it does, it's like all of them.
Okay, all right, if that's all, then the chairman will take a motion, line up of six. See any discussions before we do this?
Make a motion, you're, I'll second.
And first, Rob, and second, I'm favoring.
Dan, Mark.
Camry.
Chris, forget.